And so the meeting is now called to order. J.C., would you lead us in invocation, please? No warning.
Pray with me. I have any fathers we gather here this morning, we ask that you be with the commissioners and the judge. Give them the wisdom and the guidance to do what is best for Hood County. We thank you for the men and women who are in foreign countries who are fighting for the right that we exhibit today in meeting. We thank, we ask that you be with them, watch over them, be with their families, and bring them home safely for these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me, please, in the pledge of the flag of our great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the pledge of Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
There's Tim Boob. Thank you all very much. We have special presentations this morning, Mary.
We have some service certificates and service pins for the following people. I will ask Rose Sissy Cardwell and Teresa McCoy to come up. Rose is receiving a certificate for five years of service to Hood County. She just said, "Don't call me Rose." The next certificate is for Kristy Lynn Jackson for five years' service to Hood County, Mary Burnett. The next certificate goes to Kelly Neal in recognition for 10 years of service to Hood County, and Brian Wilson will present that. And if Commissioner Simpson would like to come down and present the next certificate to Marty Valancamp for 10 years' service to Hood County.
By the way, Marty, Mr. Eubank said say hello to you. Larry Eubank?
And the last certificate goes to Jerry Frann, presented by Donald Lenny for 25 years of service to Hood County. That concludes our presentations.
Thank you very much, Mary. The next item is, Tim was talking about the Arts District.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much for letting me speak. I'll make it brief because I didn't know the commissioner's agenda was so lengthy, so I'll make it as quick as I can. At the beginning of the year, the Historic Granbury Merchants Association asked me to chair a committee, an arts committee, to identify certain ways that we can promote and build the arts downtown. One of the projects that we found out that we should be doing is this Arts and Cultural District. It's a cultural district designation that's put on by Texas Commission on the Arts. And basically, in 2005, they created this program to identify cultural districts throughout the state in different communities and cities from big and small, regardless of their size, knowing that there are different arts and cultural treasures in the state in these different communities. There are different categories of this cultural district, but the one that applies to us would be what they call Downtown Focus. And I'm going to read this very quickly, and I want to see if you can understand why I think Granbury fits this so perfectly. A cultural district that encompasses most of the downtown area, including the Central Business District, and uses most or all of a community's cultural attractions to attract citizens and visitors. Culture in these districts is broadly defined and includes major arts institutions, popular attractions, restaurants, nightclubs, movie theaters, parks, and tourism sites. This model tends to be established in smaller communities where the downtown can be more easily packaged as a destination. When I first read that, that described downtown Granbury to me pretty well, and I was surprised to hear that the leadership at TCA and the gentleman who runs this designation program is actually already familiar with our community. He has some family who lives here and has seen our downtown. So they were very happy to hear that we were pursuing this Arts District designation. The main thing that I'm looking for from this court would be a letter of support or resolution of some sort that simply says that we understand what's going on and we support the formation of the district. There's no financial commitment, which was one of the big questions that Scott Sobczek with the city and I talked to Mr. McMillan at TCA about, was what exactly are these government bodies on the hook for? And they said absolutely nothing. It's basically up to you guys how you want to support the district. When the city did their support and they did create a resolution, I just dropped something. Oh, one up there. When they created their resolution, they worded it in a way that didn't commit them to any type of financial commitment, but left that door open in case they wanted to at some point in the future. Really, the biggest concern that I have is making sure that this county is represented in the district and that the court would appoint either a commissioner or a county official of some sort to sit on the steering committee. The steering committee is made up of arts-related organizations, the Langdon Center, Lake Granbury Art Association, the city, Historic Granbury Merchants Association, and then, of course, someone from the county, I would hope. The steering committee would decide, you know, what exactly the Arts District is going to pursue, what kind of budget that the Arts District can do and can create, what kind of projects that it will be able to undertake, and we want the county represented, especially because of the courthouse with the renovations going on. We see that as a big focal point of this district. If you know, if you're familiar with how the historical district is formed in the city, that's pretty much almost the exact same boundaries as what we're looking at for this cultural district. North from the railroad Veterans Museum, south to the lake, and then about from Bridge Street over to the Conference Center and Hewlett Park is about what we're looking at. And there's no economic disadvantage, anything. It's not like the historical district where it's going to, people are going to be required to meet certain codes and things like that. It's simply, it's more of a vanity district in that we're able to say, "We have this cultural district, and this organization promotes any arts-related enterprises or events or anything like that, and also develops arts education initiatives and that type of thing." So that's really what we're looking at. Anything on the top of your head that you think of that you want to hear from me?
Are you looking for us to basically approve a resolution stating our support?
That's basically the gist of it. I have a copy of a sample resolution that TCA actually creates, and then have been assured by them that the commissioners or whoever, whatever body wants to pass a resolution can change it up as they wish. It's just a, it's a, just an example. Also, they said it's very flexible, even a letter of support, just maybe a letter that Judge Cochrane signs that says, "We understand what's going on and support this and wish to appoint an official to sit on the steering committee," you know, something like that. They pretty much accept anything. It's a very flexible program.
I'd make the motion that we...
Any motion, is it?
Okay, okay.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Roan that we move forward on approving a resolution or a letter of support. Is there any other discussion or...
Point of order, Judge.
I know, we're not going to, we're not going to pass anything.
Well, it's not even an action item. It's a presentation.
Just give it to us, and we'll put it on the next agenda.
That's perfect. All righty, works for me.
Tim, do you have another organizational meeting today? Is that what I read somewhere?
You know, yes. In fact, and I meant to mention that, thank you, Steve. This afternoon at 3:00 at the Langdon Center, as part of this application, we have to do a required public forum that describes, and I'll even have an actual presentation that you can see, maps and everything, that outlines the entire district and some budget numbers and also some possible programming we'll pursue. So 3:00 at the Langdon Center, if you, if y'all like some more information and can attend that, then I would highly encourage it.
Okay, if you have that resolution, I'll take it, and then we can distribute it and...
Okay, yeah. And this is the sample.
Okay. All right, and then it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Under special presentations, it's not listed, but Brenda has something that she'd like to Go Texan, right, Brenda? You come forward.
Scott Young, I believe, is well.
Yeah, Scott, okay.
Judge Cochrane and commissioners, my name is Scott Young. I'm president of the Historic Granbury Merchants Association, and this is Mrs. Brenda Hyde, who's our executive director and events coordinator. And in light of that, we'd like to make sure everyone's aware of our Memorial Day weekend coming up and that everyone will come support. It's a joint project between us and the Veterans Museum, which is an incredible institution that's going to be a great asset to our community as it grows. But today, we're here to present an award. The Historic Granbury Merchants Association applied through Go Texan, which is a way through the Department of Agriculture in Texas to support, promote rural activities, business, tourism, and heritage. And we applied for this award through our organization, but did it through Hood County. We wanted the whole county to be involved in this. It involved an application, several pieces of information that we had to write and so forth, a video and an interview. And they did award this year to Hood County, Texas, this Go Texan Award. The Go Texan people would have been here to present this, however, due to budget restraints, there are no longer Go Texan employees as of about a month ago. So Brenda and I'd like to present this to the county, and I hope we can use this to promote. It's just kind of like the historic district. It's something we can promote that we've been awarded and recognized for an outstanding county.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott. Put it there for everybody to see. Okay. Next item is announced friends of library bookstore, I mean, Sandy Bryant here, she, yeah, and Sandra Tarver. Sandy is the chairman of the committee for the bookstore, and Sandra has been active in sorting and organizing and making books available for sale. So if y'all, y'all have any say, or we're just announcing the opening. You want to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, y'all, everybody go down to the bookstore and buy some books, right?
Mark 4:30.
All right.
Mark 4:30.
Thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's Wednesday, May 25th, 4:30 p.m., 2:22. Travis, all right, Granbury. Now we have, is anybody else, I know I have several items here, want to speak on... Agenda items. Is there anyone else here that hasn't turned in a form that wants to?
Cotton, you have something?
Yes. Commissioners, Judge, may it please the court. We have a letter of appreciation here from the Hood County Bar Association to present to Gloria Byrd, Emma Castillo, and Benny Davenport for their help with the Second Court of Appeals visit and luncheon. Our department is very thankful to Mr. Robert Dozier and the other members of the Bar Association for their recognition of the people. And if I may, take a moment, Tim Flower and myself would like to say that we are very proud of the job that our housekeepers do. It's an endless and repetitive job that they carry out every day, but under Gloria's leadership and with Emma's experience and work ethic and Benny's attention to detail, the whole team approaches their job with professionalism that our whole department looks up to. And thank you all for your time.
Benny?
Yeah, all three, come on up. Let's get a picture. They work hard.
Hardest working people.
Benny be in the back, and they can see him. Before we move on to the consent agenda, is there anything else that, did anybody else raise their hand about speaking to an agenda item? No? Okay, now we consider agenda, anybody need to pull anything off of the agenda, consent agenda?
No comment, Judge. I would make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Simpson and seconded by...
Barry.
Yeah, Commissioner Barry. I know, I was, you were doing something. You raised your hand. You want to say something else? Is there any discussion? And all in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Item number, next one is business to be discussed, consider roads and plats. Don?
Judge, commissioners, the first agenda item is to discuss and consider county's participation in work to be done at Rough Creek Cemetery. We had a request to clear some brush, I guess you would say, in the right of way of this access road and to do some repairs to the roadway itself. However, after looking through many deeds, actually one that was dated in 1892, there's no doubt that the cemetery was donated to the trust, trustees. What I haven't been able to locate is the access road. In the deeds, it's not mentioned, it's not described. All the parcel plats that I've looked at, it doesn't show an easement up through there. I'm sure there is. It's been open all this time, but to be legal and for the court to actually consider this until we can find something or some kind of permission, I have, I do have the owners, both owners on each side, their address. I could send them something under the advice of the county attorney on how to word it, if y'all would be willing to do that or simply wait for the request or to provide something to us. I could make a request, consideration of it.
Don, I guess I would, I would opt to be proactive on it and attempt to contact, since it's only two property owners involved, contact them both if they know anything about that right of way or about an easement or anything formal that they would have in their possession that could clear the issue quickly. If they don't, then we have to take a backup route to that, I guess. We, as we investigated and found out by law, we have the ability, if not indeed the responsibility, to maintain historic cemeteries, but it doesn't speak to the access ingress egress issue, which is where we are here. Something does need to be done, so I think we should be proactive and contact the two property owners.
Yeah, man, let's talk. Yeah, I know. Keldon, do you want to say anything about this right now or not? Okay. All right. I think we have somebody, Ronnie Everett, that wants to speak about this.
On that deed, it said it dated three acres, I think, on the 1892 agreement. On that three acres of cemetery is actually about two. That 517-foot road is the access to the cemetery. Before the cemetery was there, or not before the cemetery was there, it used to be a school, and that was the access to the school. And then the school was later on moved to another location, but the cemetery remained. That road has always been the access to and from the cemetery, and the cemetery has always, or the property owners have never had access on either side of it until that one house was built there on the north side of the cemetery. But that house, when it was built, their access was through another property or their own property. And then later on, they cut the fence, bring some trucks in up there, then they made a little driveway. But basically, the, you know, the cemetery, the county has always, we've been grandfathered before on the maintenance of the road. And we maintain, used to the cemetery was maintained throughout by the county. They come and made the gravel circle road and all that stuff inside, the county did. They furnished the gravel and everything. Since we put the new gate up, then we've been maintaining the inside, and the county has been maintaining up to the new gate. But the county has always done it before. The other property owners, they don't use that road for access to their property. And you also look on the, when anybody's been out there, when you turn on the cemetery road, there's two posts on either side that used to be our sign, and we had to take the sign down because the back end was couldn't get through there. And then we put the new entrance in later on. But the county has always maintained that road.
Keldon, do we have precedent established, having worked on that road before? What does the law say about that?
Don't know. What else? Just going to take some research, and shows on paper what's there, when it happened. It's not taken away as anything, it's not factual, but have action taken by the court? I think that you need to look at this stuff and put it in the record so that if this has been going on since the 1800s, now we're talking before 2000, we need a record of something happening. You go out and do work on the road. You're now a county of over 50,000, and the burden of determining, is this a public way or is this a private way, has moved from district court to 50,000. So I think with that, we still need to make a record of it, as we finally did it, so we have to come back to this.
I agree, Ivan. That's what I was looking for, was some, some way to establish, if not inch off of old precedent, establish new so that we have, you know, don't have to go through this every time, something needs to be done. Because the bushes and the overgrowth out there, if you want to quit growing, you can clean it up once, and the road's going to keep getting holes.
If I could, I think there's a history, I don't have, but I can ask about the cemetery or... If I can get that...
Yeah, that would be a big help.
Is there, it says discuss and consider participation. So how does the court want to proceed with this? Do I have a motion to do something?
Well, I can't, can't make a motion to take action involving equipment, but I could certainly make a motion to attempt to expedite the research to establish a position, if not indeed establish precedent for how we go forward, with the purpose being to get something done on the road and the overgrowth.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Roan and seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to proceed with the purpose of the county's participation in maintaining the egress to the Rough Creek Cemetery. Is there any discussion? Yes.
If Dick might want to do is go see Joe Swaim or Bud Gifford. Both of them are still living. Both were commissioners, and I know Joe Swaim goes back over 20, he goes back prior to 1981. And 1981 is the golden rule on these private roads that become public roads that then we end up making passable. So what I would do is see Joe Swaim or Bud Gifford and get a letter that county equipment has been on that road. It's how we did it in a couple of other developments in Precinct Four. It sets a precedence.
Yeah, I'll do that for you. Thank you.
Also, another question that I ask a lot of the guy here, and that is, if you have this property here in Slamon, you haven't used no evidence.
Yeah.
You haven't had a record that you're going after, going to formal investigation.
It's the roadway, the way I understand it, Mr. Everett, right? Or, it's the roadway we're looking at more so than the cemetery, correct?
Yeah, the entrance and the roadway, both. But I'll do that. I'll contact both of those gentlemen and get back to you with that as soon as possible. See what they say. If they can give us verbal record they can turn into writing that they've been there before, then that might answer the question.
I really don't know what year it was, but I've, I've myself seen Bud Gifford when they put that asphalt on that road back in, in the 80s. I was working up that way, and they were down there doing that. So I know for a fact that they were doing, I seen it with my own eyes that Bud Gifford and them fixed that road. But he will give you a letter.
All right. As we say, we have a motion in front of us. All in favor?
Aha.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item is discuss county participation in Nubbin Ridge Cemetery.
Judge, this request was to bring in base material and actually construct a perimeter road inside the Nubbin Ridge Cemetery. After speaking with the county attorney and under his advice, I would recommend to the court that this would be illegal. Under the Health and Safety Code, Chapter 713, even though that there is markers that are over 50 years old, as stated in the Safety and Health Code, there's also a church on the property, which that's one of the exceptions to the county spending in public funds.
Don, I read the law. That is the exception, the fact that there is an active church on the property. I went out there again myself yesterday, and I think I would agree with Don that we could get in trouble if we go in there and construct a road around the back end of that circle on the back end. I think if they, if the church wants to do that there, that's going to have to be their responsibility to do so. So I'd make the motion here that we, that we not participate in the construction of a, of course, a road at the back end of Nubbin Ridge.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton, that we do not participate in the work to be done at Nubbin Ridge Cemetery. Any discussion? Then, all in favor?
Aha.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Development and compliance, Tom?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. First item on the agenda under development and compliance is to request you set a public hearing to consider and take appropriate action for the replat of Lot 1, Block 1 Heatherton addition located in Precinct 3 and submitted by Leonard and Dorothy Heatherton. Judge Commissioners, this is a request by Leonard and Dorothy Heatherton to consolidate property at the intersection of Fault Creek and Commerce Street. It'll be a 2.81 acre consolidation, and I request that you set a public hearing for this replat on 6/28 June, or 28th day of June at Commissioners Court Meeting.
So move. All right, go ahead. Have a motion by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Roan to set a public hearing to consider taking appropriate action on the replat of Lot 1, Block 1 Heatherton addition located in Precinct 3. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you very much. One abstain. We, one, go ahead, Tom.
The second item on the agenda is consider and take appropriate action on a site development plan for fabrication facility prevented by G-Force at 5250 West Highway 377 and located in Precinct 1. Judge Commissioners, this is a request by G-Force Incorporated, Jeff Pickle, to establish a metal fabrication facility on a 16 and 1/4 acre tract at 5250 West Highway 377. The development will consist of a 100 by 125-foot metal building, which will be used for fabrication, and a 50 by 100 metal building, which will be used by office, or be used as an office. It will utilize the existing right-of-way off of 377 into the facility. And the septic for the office application and design has been submitted to James, the Environmental Health Director, and it has been approved. This site development plan was presented to the Development Commission on May 19th. They recommended approval. Staff has reviewed this application also and also recommends approval.
So move.
I already have a motion by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to approve the development plan for the fabrication facility presented by G-Force at 5250 West Highway 377. Any discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Next one is Item B, which is budget and finance.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, I have no budget amendments today. So if we could move on to the considering of bills to be paid.
Okay.
The total bills for the court's consideration come to $452,137.50. Some of the larger items are $31,632.11, which is an internal transfer from the general fund into the accounting fund for indigent defense attorney fees. Then to ergon, asphalt, and emulsion, $12,674.04 for road building materials. For JC Stoddard Construction, on the courthouse restoration project, a progress payment of $164,262.83. And that would bring us up through the end of April on their contract. And for Transmontane Product Service, $42,664.64 for fuel card purchases. And then to Tyler Technologies Incorporated, $27,735 for the annual maintenance on the Tyler Eagle imaging system. I have provided payment warrants for each of the scheduled items. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have on them.
Move we pay the bills.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Berry, to ratify paying the bills. Any discussion on any of these? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much, Dan. The next item is miscellaneous, under miscellaneous, consider and take appropriate action on tax assessors' request regarding SCOTF law program. Teresa?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I have some additional information for you in addition to what was in your packets. If I may. I've talked to some of y'all a little bit, just briefly about this in the past. And I visited with Justice Cockrum about it, and he kind of slipped this in on the agenda on me today. We decided that we would bring it up and discuss it formally. And then we can go ahead and talk about this. But my suggestion would be that we maybe schedule a workshop or something at a later time where we can get into more detail and discuss it a little bit further, do a little more research on it. But the SCOTF law, Texas Transportation Code 502.185 allows the county tax assessor collector to refuse registration on a motor vehicle for someone who owns a vehicle and owes the county money for a fine, fee, or tax that is past due. Several counties, I think there are about 10 in the state so far who have done this. I think the counties have relatively recently started participating in this. And it's been actually law for a long time. But I think there were some pros and some cons. And a lot of them weren't really in favor of the way some of it works. And so they've just kind of recently started, in the last few years, adopting this program. We would kind of set our own program. From what I understand, we would contract with Texas DOT or Texas Department of Motor Vehicles to flag these records. And then when someone comes in to renew, we can refuse to register their vehicles if they owe the county money that's past due. And that's really the bulk of it. Of course, there are some pros and cons, you know, to this. And I think we should look at it a little more in depth. But the counties that have done this have had great success with getting those fines and fees paid. They've recouped a lot of revenue that they weren't collecting otherwise.
Okay, then.
Are there any specific questions that you have? I think you've got quite a bit of information now in front of you on that. And we've talked about it just briefly before in the hallways and such.
Teresa, is it $23 per run, is that per person that comes in?
No, sir, that, when we, in order for Texas DOT or DMV to flag the record, we have to submit files to them every time that we submit a file of those records to be flagged or have the flag removed. Because if, you know, if they come in and they pay or whatever, then we have to unflag that record so that it won't create a problem when they come into the office to renew. But every time we send them a record or a list of records, we pay $23 and then 12 cents per record for every record flagged. And I think that I gave you something on that. We can also pass along that cost, you know, to the person that's paying the fine, you know, to cover flagging those records.
Only the person that's paying the fine, though, not the average person that's done, that didn't have a flag, correct?
Correct. We can pass along that cost. And I think that, I'm not exactly sure how the other counties are doing it, but my recommendation would be just to charge, you know, a $3 fee or whatever, you know, whatever it comes out to for labor and the cost for flagging the record to the person that's actually, you know, owed the fine.
We need a workshop because the state, the way I understand it, is going to raise our registration fees. And I have a tax increase, they're going to raise our user fees. So what's the difference? But I don't want to turn around and do the same at the county level. And out of $3 to $23 fee, everybody comes in your door. So I need more information.
That $23 would be for a batch of records. You know, so it would be for several records.
And 12 cents for each one that's on there.
Right.
I would add, you have to establish a $500 non-interest bearing account, right?
Exactly, we would have to put money on deposit with DMV or, you know, have a pay-as-you-go thing set up with them. But we have to maintain $500 in that account with DMV if we contract with them to flag the records.
Is their money before we collect their money? Another...
Well, we're...
Don't get me started.
We're not really collecting money for them, we're collecting that money for the county that's owed.
Does that actually cause you any security problems for people to come in and refuse to register their...
Some of them girls in there can catch us.
Obviously, you know, people that come in there, they get refused. There are going to be some that get upset. You know, there are probably going to be some that just say, okay, I forgot about, you know, I forgot about the ticket or whatever, and I'll go down and take care of it and come back. I'm sure there are going to be some people that get irate. Of course, we deal with that kind of on a regular basis anyway. So in my opinion, that office collecting as much money as we do should have some kind of security anyway. You know, we don't have it now. In fact, yesterday, we had a major issue with a customer blowing up in the acting office. Had some deputies and a couple constables come in. So, you know, that's, people getting upset with us is kind of a regular thing anyway. Definitely has its pros and cons.
So you'll bring us more information in a workshop, is that what you're wanting to do?
Well, I have quite a bit of information, and it's a lot to absorb. I just think that we need to have a workshop and talk about it in more detail, you know, when time permits.
I would agree, I would like to know in more detail about specifically how the girls are going to handle this so as not to jeopardize their safety anymore than they're already, or not compromise their safety.
I move we table this to a future date. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Heatherton and seconded by Commissioner Simpson that we table this until a later time until we can put it on the agenda for, at a workshop. Is there any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried to table this. Thank you, Teresa. Next item is consider and take a request for the COPS grant program for two deputies and take appropriate action. Sheriff?
Judge Commissioners, every year, for some time now, the federal government has put out this COPS grant. Didn't know if it was going to get cut this year, but apparently they're going to have it again for another year. So what I've requested is to put in for two deputies. And they, the way the grant works, they would fund that deputy salary and benefits for three years. And then we have to keep them for that fourth year. And then that'd be on the county's nickel. And I'm, I need more deputies. There's just, when times are good, business is booming for me. And when times are bad economically, like they are now, then it's even busier. So I never can have enough deputies out there. And just, we're talking about that previous item there about needing more security. So Tom's done a great job of doing grants. And so if approved today, then Tom will put this grant together and submit it for me. So I ask for your approval on this. And if you've got any questions, I'll answer them.
Anybody have any questions for the sheriff?
You applied for this two or three years in a row, haven't you?
Yes. So move.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Berry and seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to approve the action to go ahead on the COPS grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Sheriff, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is consider ratification for the signature on the TABC block grant, overtime for deputies.
Judge Commissioners, this is a grant that came up, and has come up in the past. I think this is the first year we've applied for. We've done the tobacco grants. But this grant is one that goes hand in hand with some of our stuff that we've been working on, like last, end of last year with working with TABC and the city of Granbury and trying to go after offenders of alcohol, drinking laws, and things of that nature. And so now there's a grant out there, a block grant through the state, that we can do this. And at this point, we were looking at probably putting in around, asking for $5,000 or so. But now we're going to ask for about $8,500 worth. And this will pay for overtime for undercover stings and party patrols. And I think it'll make Hood County a better and safer place. So I ask that you approve it so we can get that ratified. We did, the deadline on this was like a week ago. But, so we got the paperwork put together so we could get it submitted. And so now I ask that you ratify the signatures and we move forward. And hopefully, we'll get this grant.
So move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Simpson to approve the block grants, any discussion?
Roger, is this one you work with us on the Substance Use Council? And there's things that are done, you work in cooperation with the city on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And this would help pay for the deputies' time in doing that, for extra overtime for them.
Any other discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried, thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Next item is to consider and take appropriate action regarding burn ban.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Recent events, the weather's really helped us out quite a bit. We're sitting at about a 300 to 400 in the KBDI. The forecast in the next two weeks is to get up in that 400 to 500 range. So right now, I'd ask, there'd be no change, but let's go and put this on the agenda for next time as well.
So move.
Second. Well, I have a motion by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Rohn to move this to the next court. Any other discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
Consider appointment of representative for Hood County for the Surface Transportation Technical Committee and take appropriate action. Steve, you want to talk about this? Because you, I sent that over to you and...
The Surface Transportation Technical Committee is a subcommittee of the Council of Government in Arlington. Judge, Commissioner Heatherton is a representative for the Regional Transportation Coalition. The Surface Transportation Group is a subgroup of this group that actually looks, there's 73 members from the Dallas-Foot Worth metropolitan area. Because we are now a member of the counties that are involved in the MOP, the Metropolitan Planning, MPO, they've asked for us to have an appointment. There's 73 members that do meet monthly. And it's the same as the sheriff's been on, and Brian's been on committees at COG. And like Commissioner Heatherton's on a committee at COG, this is just a subcommittee, and it's the Surface Transportation. It's important that we have people on all these committees so that we know what's going on in transportation. Michael Morris and Dan Kessler are the chair and co-chair of these committees. It just keeps us abreast of where money's being spent in Dallas County and Tarrant County and all of the MPO area.
Now, the way I read it, or looked at the membership, most of these people are engineers and things like that, right?
It's broken down to about 75-25 split. Most of them are engineers, and then it breaks off then to either city employees, such as planners, or there's at least three different commissioners that I see on here. Leonard, Commissioner Heatherton, and myself both ask a engineering firm their price. And to attend the meeting would be around $200 to $300 an hour. We don't have that as a budgeted item at this point.
We don't want that.
Well, then I'll entertain a motion. Do I have for an appointment to this committee? You have recommendations for appointment, any commissioners?
I'll appoint Steve Berry to take that, Joe.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Heatherton to appoint Steve Berry.
Maybe it'll die in half a second.
Commissioner Simpson seconded that motion, is there any discussion?
Just remember, paybacks are good.
Well, at least you were here, so. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
It does meet monthly, the same as Commissioner Heatherton. Judge Harmon at Johnson County and Commissioner Heatherton both sit on the regional transportation meeting. And so they meet, I think, the third week, we meet the fourth week, so we should have reports back. Also be known that Thursday, Texas DOT is supposed to have the call for the past due funding. And we've applied at Crescent. In April, they did postpone that because the budget was not set at the state level. And this month, they're supposed to do that Thursday in Austin. So we may know something about past due funding.
This has been vacant since last March, and we didn't know it till we got the notification where it said it. Our position was vacant, so we needed to move pretty quick to get it filled so we can have representation on that committee. All right, next item is purchasing, consider and take appropriate action toward RFP 2011-010 aggregates for surface treatment.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. RFP 2011-010 aggregates for surface treatment was reissued as a result of not receiving any proposals to the original issue. Two vendors responded to the reissue RFP. Per the recommendations of Don Lenny, we are going to ask that this be awarded to Vulcan Materials. I sent you all the recap sheets, and you will note the pricing differences. That is because the two vendors that quoted are quoting different products, different grades of products. The 4S product is a product that is not as good, according to Mr. Lenny. They've used it before, and they've had to go back and redo the roads, which results in another financial burden to the county. So instead of using that material... So instead of using that material, we want to use the grade four and not have to redo anything. So it's my recommendation that we award this to Vulcan.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Simpson to approve awarding the aggregate surface treatment to Vulcan Materials for grade four product. Is there any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. The next item is for bank depository bids.
RFP 2011-005 bank depository bid was issued and then opened on April 8th in the Hood County Purchasing Office. An evaluation team was assembled consisting of Kathy Davis, Hood County Treasurer, Stan McBroom, Hood County Auditor, and Jan Pope with Hood County Information Systems. Individual scoring was conducted and a meeting was held to write the summation report for the award. You have been given all this in your bid packets, how the scores were originally done. The average scores, First Financial Bank is who we are recommending receive this award and they were quite a bit, their score was quite a bit higher than the other two banks. So it would be my recommendation in conjunction with the evaluation team that we award this to First Financial.
Show move. I have a motion by Commissioner Berry to approve the RFP, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton for First Financial Services. Is there any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item number seven is the GTL grant, I believe that's the Sheriff.
Judge and Commissioners, this isn't a grant, this is a...
Oh, it's a contract.
This is an amendment to the contract that we have with GTL and what I bring before you today is a, is an agreement, an amendment to the agreement to allow us through commissary to sign or sell phone cards. The way it is right now, we don't do this at all, but we're getting ready to if, if it approves. The Attorney General put out an opinion on this a while back, it's dated November 4th, 2010, that the county attorney did send me, so we started looking into this and talking to the company, GTL, that does our, our phone contract. And as it stands right now, the, the county gets into the general fund about $3,000 a month for the general phone usage. That shouldn't change, it shouldn't vary at all. This will be in addition to that because these cards, when the inmate buys them, they can still use them when they get out of the jail and then it'll be an extra way for us to, to make a little extra money through commissary. So I bring this amendment to you and I'll ask for your approval and allow the county judge to sign the same. Then along with this, I know it's gonna, could possibly affect that $3,000 that you get off the regular phone system because they might start using these a little bit more. In other county jails, it really hasn't affected that hardly at all. But I've talked to a number of you, you guys about, in the past when we could afford it and the commissary is doing a lot better now, this will help it, then I'd like to, as a concession to this, to the court to help for this coming budget year and it can start now, it doesn't have to wait until October 1st and in the past, we've reimbursed through the commissary, one of the commissary clerk's pay, including benefits. So I'm prepared to start that off again and work it out with the auditor and the treasurer to get a bill and we'll make those payments and pay for that, that person. In the past, it's been one that's a more senior person, so I'd like to reimburse Thielander's, his pay, it's a little bit less, but it'll still be a pretty good amount for the court to get back into the general fund, so as a concession on this deal. So anyway, back to the original thing, to ask for the judge to sign this and court to approve it.
All right, any discussion on this? Anybody have any questions about this for the Sheriff? And I'll entertain a motion to approve this, these cards. Commissioner Roan, have a motion from him, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Simpson. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff, a motion's approved. All right, item, thank you. Item number eight is discuss and take appropriate action on the gates located at Cliffview and Pathfinder and confer with the county attorney, Kelton Connor.
There's, I'll put this on the agenda, Judge, if you don't mind, I'll start off and I know you have quite a few people signed up to speak. This is in my precinct, it's on the northwest side of the, the lake, on the very northern part of Precinct Four of 2580, almost between Tintop and Thorpe Springs. It's, came up about almost a month ago now, there's a development which is Cliffview and then another development there which is Indian Hills. When you look at the plats and the way this was platted and it's been many years ago, it's between two developments. Back in '07, when I came on court, we took Pathfinder in and made it passable due to the fact that emergency equipment, emergency police, fire, ambulance, the mail carrier didn't go down there, school bus didn't run down there, so we made Pathfinder a passable road. In the last month, there's two gates that have never been closed since I've been in office that is, is come up and some people want to close those gates. On the, from visiting with the county attorney and having him look at this with me and Road Operations Manager, Don Lenny, the plat says that when it was deeded, it was hereby dedicate to public use forever, the streets and easements shown on this plat for the mutual use and accommodation of all public utilities and government agencies. So right there on the top of the plat where it was filed and it was filed through Commissioners' Court and filed, and that's the cliffs, it talks about the easement and the public roads where they were deemed usable. So since I've been in office, those gates have never been closed. We tried to let them work it out amongst themselves and it continues to just come up. The, the county attorney and myself and Don Lenny got involved in this and I know you have some folks that want to speak. It's our opinion from reading the plat and the way it's filed and the way that, when the county attorney reads the law today, that these gates should not be closed, they are public use, it's a public right of way, it's an easement. So that's where we stand on this. I know you do have some people that'd like to speak, Judge, but I'll have a motion after they've spoke.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, let's take these in no particular order, but is, I believe it's Craig, is it Mayberry? Would you come forward?
My name's Craig Mayberry and like it was mentioned there, my wife and I and several others in here are residents of Pathfinder. I know that there, as you mentioned, the issues of gates being closed, but I, I just simply just wish to say that in view of signed petitions, emails, letters of just desire and intent, is the overwhelming majority of residents of both Pathfinder and Cliffview that both gates remain open. And that's really all I have to, to mention.
So you're for them remaining open?
Correct.
Okay.
You said you have a petition there, Mr. Mayberry?
Yeah, petitions.
You leave it to the clerk, that way we'll all get a copy of it that way. Thank you.
All right, next, Michael Lacy.
Judge Commissioner, my name is Michael Lacy, I live at 2917 Cliffview Court, which is in the subdivision or, or development called Cliff on Lake Greenberry. Of the, the purpose I'm here today is to advise my stand on the property that's in question. The property in question, according to the county attorney and the commissioner, Steve Berry, is that the gates are public gates and that the road between those two gates are, is a public road. This was never intended to be a public road and it has never been used as a public road that has been used by people in Pathfinder because Pathfinder was, was not passable. Pathfinder is passable now. The, the gentleman that was just up here, Mayberry, said that he had a petition for the majority of people in the area on both Cliffview Court and Pathfinder Court. The deal about this is that the reason we wanted the gates closed is that the property that the, the road services is all private. There's 27 boat slips down there that the, the road service and that they each are allotted to the owners of the 27 lots in Cliffview, on, in the Cliff on, on Lake Greenberry. There's 25 owners of those lots. So two boat slips are owned by one person and two other boat slips are owned by another person. All the other boat slips are owned individually. That's how you get 25 out of 27. But the deal about it is the gates were installed to protect that property that's to the lake. The reason that we're wanting to close them now is because of the vandalism, the trash dumping down there, the ability to put personal property down on the lake, there's, it's also restricted of what you can put down on your boat slip, but if you don't secure the, the area, then whatever you put down there is subject to be vandalized or stolen. My point is that when I bought the property, in my deed, it has restrictions of what the road is supposed to be used for. It also has in the covenants what it's supposed to be used for and reading one deal on a, on a plat in, in what is being told here is only an opinion. So I would like to, for, for you to allow us to close the, the gates. We, we've took a, a poll of the people that own the property, which are the 25 members, which belong to the association, which actually owns the, the road and the gates, to allow us to close those gates. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker is, is it Laura Lynn Lacy?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I'd like to add to what Michael said. I'm his wife, we own the property at 2917 Cliffview Court. You all were given a packet yesterday that includes maps, plat maps. The Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants that was filed by Justin McWilliams, in the definitions, it's a 10-page document, the definitions outline who the association is, which is owners of the lots in the cliffs, including the boat slips on the water. It also outlines the private road and what its use is and next to the last page, on item number 25 titled "To Private Road and Gate," it specifically states, "Private road and gate apparatus shall be conveyed to the association free of lien by the dedicator. The association shall own the private road and gate apparatus in fee simple and assume all maintenance obligations which may be hereafter established." From what an attorney that we've had, look at all of this paperwork, he's saying that that includes, the private road is the ingress egress road that goes to the boat slips. Everything that was on the plat that has to do with streets and easements has to do with Cliffview Court, which is a public street which goes from Tintop all the way down to the cul-de-sac on the map. Does not include passing the gates and going down to where the bottom gate is. According to what we were led to believe by the attorney and the paperwork, the association is responsible for that road, that ingress egress easement, private road, the maintenance of it, the upkeep of it and the gates. And we're asking that we should be able to keep those, or keep those closed to protect our property. We've had people dumping trash and garbage, some people go down and hunt on those private boat slips and as Michael said, if we put anything down there, it's been stolen. We've had several things stolen by people on the cliffs that have put some things on their boat slips, excuse me, that wound up missing. And do you have any questions?
Any, anybody have any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. Do, do we have any other opinions on this? Kelton, do you have anything to add?
Two more speakers.
Well, if you, wait, wait just, you need to sign a piece of paper if you want to speak and Sheriff will have some for you and we'll let you. Kelton, you want to say anything right now or no?
I'm, I'm still, basically have the same opinion. 2,000, I don't know.
With closing it?
That day. I can't say a change back.
Even in '04, I have an easement agreement in '04 that was signed by the developer, Justin McWilliams and it talks specifically about lots one through 10 of Indian Hills and it talks about the private road in this subdivision and it talks about the easement is providing pedestrian and car and light traffic, egress and ingress to and from the benefited property and the public roads known as Cliffview Court. But at the same time, those gates have never been closed. The sad part of this deal is, since I've been in office for four years and five months, I went and talked to Commissioner Schaefer prior to me, these gates were never shut. The, so the sad part is, there's a, there's a, there's neighborhoods that are in, fighting over this. The reason that Pathfinder was made passable was because of the way the laws read and the courts prior to us couldn't fix Pathfinder. So I took every commissioner, I believe, except Commissioner Roan out and, and even the judge and drove Pathfinder. It's a disgrace. It's absolutely a disgrace that we live in a county of 52,000 people and we still have roads and people paying taxes on lakefront property and we still have roads in that type of situation. Now, it's not anybody in this room's fault that that was done that way. It's the way that, and if you know the county government, it runs in the same law that Senator Burgeville and Representative Kefner set up for us. We can't just go take over roads. Now that we're over 50,000, according to County Attorney Connor, we have a little more leeway and that falls on our court instead of the district court. But I drove Commissioner Simpson out there because that's an area that due to redistricting, he may have to get in his precinct because I have to lose 12,000 numbers and I showed Commissioner Simpson, at the very time we did it, there was a couple moving their mailbox in tears, in tears about this because of the fight going on between two neighborhoods. I worry about who's going to call and be upset one day and she has a husband that's sick and they're moving their mailbox because of the Hatfield and McCoy fight going on. So, you know, to solve this problem, we need to pick up the ball and fix Pathfinder. Okay? And once we pick, fix Pathfinder and it'll be able to get a road that they can get in and out of their subdivision, then a lot of this problem would go away. But it, it, it disheartens me and it's a terrible part of my job when you get into the legal mumbo jumbo of what you can and can't do. The Lacy's have been nothing but cordial to me in my office. Ms. Lacy, Dr. Lacy is, I do believe they probably want it because of criminal mischief. The Sheriff's shorthanded, as he's told many of us many times, and I do think that they have problems. When you go all the way down to the lake and I've taken everybody down there, there is illegal dumping. James McCoslin's aware of it, Tom Roman's aware of it. We have illegal dumping all over the county. It's a disaster at times. But the sad part of this deal is, I have to go off what the county attorney and I sit down and when he reads the law and he reads the plat and he sees what it says, we have to go off the way it was filed. And I know there's a couple more to speak, Judge, but if there's any way and, and that we can find funding to fix Pathfinder and find an easement and do it the way that needs to be done appropriately, then that's something that we need to step up and do now that we're over 50,000. But at the same time, I hope the Lacy's understand and I'm reading these easements and the way it was platted, our hands are pretty well tied. Go ahead, I know you've got a couple. Go ahead, I know you've got a couple.
Okay, James Ward?
I'm James Ward. I live on Cliffview Court, 3113 Cliffview Court. First off, we don't have what Mr. Lacy and Ms. Lacy says, association. The gates have always been open ever since they were put up. The way I read, in 2001, the roads that's in between Cliffview Court, all the way down to the last gate, was declared a public road at that time. There's no way to close the gates. Actually, the gate at the bottom is on Pathfinder, not Cliffview. So they should stay open, and the gates should be taken down. We have a petition to give the road in between the gates to the county to maintain, and hopefully that'll be taken up. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next is Denise Mayberry.
I really don't need to say anything to the Lord, Commissioner Berry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael, you guys one other thing?
Yes, I'd like to readdress this to everybody, telling them about the rights we have and what rights we don't. The deal that gets me is that we're dealing with private property. They said that they want to give it to the county. Well, the deed and covenants says that that property belongs to all the owners of the cliff, not Pathfinder, not anything else. That property is specifically dedicated to the cliff owners and the boat slip owners, which are the members of the residents who live on Cliffview. Now, I'm sorry that in 1969, when Pathfinder was, Pathfinder Court was deal, it was kind of a crappy road. Okay? The cliff was built in 2000. You know, it's not their responsibility to share the expense and the sacrifices that they paid for in their development to be used by another development because they don't want to take the time and the effort to develop their road the way they should. The gates were put there for a purpose, and that's to protect the property owners that have property down between those gates. That's the only reason those gates were installed. Now, they may or may not have ever been used. That's, you know, they were put there for a purpose. The owners of those gates and the owner of that road is the association that's active until 2050. And that's the only association that can give permission to use that road or to dedicate that road to anybody else. Now, like you said, the county attorney says, in his opinion, it says it's dedicated to the county and the public use.
He said "public." He didn't say it was dedicated to county.
What the dedication was for was for the utilities, the government entities that need to use the method in which to service the property.
I go right here on the plat that was filed, the easement, it says vehicular traffic, egress and ingress. Now, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not, I mean, the problem is, we're dealing with what the plat says is all Kelton's doing. And I'm not trying to put Kelton Connor on the spot to get up and speak. He's briefed us tremendously this week because this has been a whole ordeal all week. I have a problem understanding, if the gates were put there to be locked, why have they been locked since 2000?
Well, you used to be able to keep your door open, and because there was a lock on it, now people lock their doors.
Not for 13 or 15 years, not in Hood County, you haven't. But anyway, all we can do is what's on file, and Justin McWilliams filed these plats. This is the way the plats were filed.
And in 2000, in 2001, he dedicated that private road, which he specifically says so, in the deed and covenants of all the owners. It is dedicated to the association, which is the owners of Cliffview Court. Okay?
But at the same time, at the same time, when you read that, my question is, when you read what, you even brought up there yesterday, Dr. Lacy, and you took a vote, there's 27 lots. Only 13 people voted.
No, actually, there was more than that. But there's 19 owners that actually live on the property. The other 28 lots are owned by six other people that do not live on the property.
How did they vote?
They didn't vote.
The association, you have to let them vote to make it.
I didn't say they didn't, couldn't vote.
Do you have an association?
We have the association that's dedicated to the owners of the cliff on Lake Greenberg.
Owned by laws that you're quoting from, it takes 75 percent, two-thirds of, 66 percent, two-thirds of the membership voting.
Of the meeting.
No, sir, that's not true. It's got to be of all the lot owners.
No.
Anyway, Judge.
I know.
The thing about this is, is that the question of the law, will we end up having to be filed in district court?
Sure, I agree. And I told you and your wife that, and I told the folks that lived on Pathfinder. That's why the court needs to fix Pathfinder as we go forward. Okay? Because I told both you and your wife.
Responsibility and people that live on Cliffview Court to fix Pathfinder for the people that live in.
I didn't say that, but at the same time, Cliffview Court is a county road.
Cliffview Court, and a court is from this point to that point.
Is a county road. Everybody in this room can drive along it.
We're not debating here. We're not debating that from Tintop to Cul-de-sac. We're not debating that. That is a public road. What we're debating is, is the private ownership between the two gates is not.
We understand that, but that's why we have a county attorney. We all went to county attorney, and that's all I can work off of. And that's why his opinion, and just like your wife, I believe, said, opinions are made by lawyers every day, and this will probably end up in court. I'm aware of that. But at the same time, it buys me time, and it buys this court time to try to fix Pathfinder and move forward. I still think it's a sad day that someone's allowed them to put mailboxes on that circle, someone's allowed the truck traffic, the trash company comes from all the way through Pathfinder and all the way out Cliffview. Someone over the years has allowed this. No one likes change. I wish this hadn't had to come to court.
And us personally, and there are several other people in the cliffs, that we haven't lived there for 10 years. We've only lived there since 2008. Several other people have moved in since then. We have one lady back here that just moved in, like, three months ago, two months ago. Anyway, what I wanted to let you know was the easement agreement, the 2004 easement agreement, that attachment E in your packet. Our attorney that we talked to stated that the grantor listed is Justin McWilliams, who is the dedicator for the plats. He's the developer for the cliffs. And since he gave the private road and the gates to the association, that the grantor should be the association and not Justin McWilliams.
I understand that, but what was filed with the court is the plat. That's all I can work off of.
Okay, but I'm talking about the easement agreement. I'm not talking about the plat or the covenant and restrictions. This easement agreement that says that lots 1 through 10 on Indian Hills, that he filed one in 2004 because he owned those properties.
I've got it.
I'm just saying that the attorney was pointing out that the grantor should be the association instead of Justin McWilliams, since he gave the private road to the association of the cliffs, not Justin McWilliams. And the other part is, from what we're understanding, we are responsible, the cliffs owners are responsible for maintaining that road. And yes, there have been trash trucks going up and down and semis with boards and all kinds of things going up and down that private road, and it has deteriorated just since we've been living there, since 2008. It is a 20-foot or less wide road. It's a little bitty tiny road that was built in 2000, along with the subdivision, for us to access our boat slips.
But, you know, let's go back to 2000, if you want to bring it up. This was actually going to be a gated community. Okay? That's one reason the gates came to start with. This was going to be a gated community until Mr. McWilliams found out that when he gated this, the county would never do maintenance on the road on Cliffview Court. At that time, he never put up the gate at the front. He had already put the back gates up. He has never locked those gates. So Judge, for time's sake and to move on, as of today, and what Kelton Connor and I have discussed, and I believe he's discussed with the whole court, my motion for me would be to leave the gates open, and it's the county's perspective today.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Berry and seconded by Commissioner Hetherton to leave the gates open. Is any further discussion? And all in favor? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item number nine is to convene into executive session for personnel matters pursuant to section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code regarding unpaid leave of absence for developer of compliance director, Tom Roman. We are reconvening to open session, take appropriate action regarding personnel matters, and the, it's about the unpaid leave of absence for Tom Roman, and he has withdrawn his request for this, so that's a dead item right now. So we don't need to talk about it anymore. Item number 11 is consider and take appropriate action to purchase arbitrator system. Sheriff, you want to come forward on that?
Judge Commissioners, we, in all our cars now, all the patrol cars, we have digital cameras. And in the past, we had, this last year, we had, half of the cars were digital, half of the cars were VHS tapes. Now, they're all digital, so it takes a lot more time to deal with it. A lot of the evidence that we get for DWI's, a lot of different things, we utilize that, and it has to go on to the county court at law and to district court. And we, like with the district attorney, we have to get those cases filed within 48 hours. So as soon as we can possibly get that information off of those cars, out of those cameras, out of those computers, we have to get that put together as a package unit. So I've come before you today to ask if we could finish this system, and from the IT director, it looked like we're going to need about $16,000 to do this. He has talked to me with all the different Panasonic parts and the, and other computer parts that he needs to make this done. Our operational deal, where we can deal with it a whole lot easier than we're dealing with it now. He went out for quotes, and the quotes totaled $14,265. But just in case, there's a few little nuts and bolts and parts and pieces that we forgot, what we'd like to ask is for $16,000 to finish out this system so we can solve a lot of headaches for my deputies, for the court system, my clerks, and then the IT people for having to help us download this information on a day-to-day and even nighttime application to try to streamline all of this.
Is it a time saver to have this system?
Absolutely, Judge.
Yeah. Come on up here.
Judge, right now, what has to happen is the cars, whenever they fill up with video, which is just X amount of days, depending how many stops and the length of the stops, they have to bring the car in, connect with an IT person, which hopefully, they're not all out in the field at the time, you know, busy with other calls. We have to connect with an IT person, then we have to take that unit offline so that we can offload that video. What we're trying to do now is get something centralized so that that data can be pulled off of the car, either by one of the sheriff's personnel or IT, so we have two ways to do this, and get it done faster. Also, it will provide a means of backup so that if something happens in there, we have backups of that data and that video. It's going to be organized, it's Panasonic-supported, it's their method, it's their system. There's two pieces to this. Part of it's the hardware, partially, we have some of that, and part of it's the software and the installation from Panasonic. We've managed to get that installation price down, so this way, we can get this part done, where they can get the video off of those cars, get it organized. And I think it's going to really assist the sheriff and his investigators because they will be able to look at that video, get the evidence that they need, make their own DVDs when they need to, and get that over to the county and district attorney in a real-time manner. So I think, yes, it's going to increase our efficiency and our reliability, and also help us to be, you know, better in compliance with a lot of things as well.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Al, have any questions?
Are we talking Fund 55?
Yes, Fund 55.
I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Simpson and seconded by Commissioner Roan to approve.
Not to exceed.
16,000, not to exceed 16,000. Any discussion?
The only thing I'd say is that when arbitrators came up and we talked about them in the budget a couple, 18 months ago, this was piecemeal together, and the sheriff was in the office this week and discussed it. Jackie's about to pull his hair out because he's trying to figure out a way to make this work. The Renee Bates auction ended Monday, and the cars that we sold, just in the cars, was $37,200. So it's not the same puddle of money, but it's almost, you know, general fund will gain back minus commission on the sale of those cars. This will finish as arbitrator, and I asked him in my office, this will finish the arbitrator, and he said, well, yeah, until we buy more cars. And I thought, well, okay.
And we know where that stands, anyway.
Judge, I was, yeah, that's right. Judge, I just wanted to add that we're planning on that not to be over the $14,000, but in case there, but in case there was something, a software piece or something that Panasonic came up and said at the last second, oh, this has to be in place, I did not want to hold up things. I wanted to go ahead and move forward and get this done. That's the reason.
I believe asking the question to Rob Christian this week, and I'm asking you and Jackie the one, anybody, DPS, Robert Young, any of Kelton's investigators, any of them that have an arbitrator can download on this system. Is that correct?
DPS has their own system, Commissioner, that they use.
Any countywide that has arbitrator will be able to come up and use that, is that correct?
It will be able to offload onto this server. So any county vehicle that uses our arbitrator system, and will be able to move that video onto this server.
Okay.
Is an IT person, an IC person still going to have to come and do it?
No, sir. We are going to be there to assist, but we will not have to be there to offload this video every time. But we're always going to be there to help and service that if the sheriff needs that. And access to the system's going to be governed between the sheriff and my department. If he says this person, investigator, needs access, then we'll do that appropriately.
And all in favor? Opposed and motion carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
This is, next is, consider and take appropriate action regarding request for sheriff's permission to apply for U.S. Department of Homeland Security grant.
Judge Commissioners, this came up a week or so ago, and we wanted to get it on the agenda. We have not applied for it yet, but it's a, and it got a little convoluted that Tom has looked into it. The deadline is June 13th, and this is a grant for Emergency Operations Center. And last year, I talked to our congressman then, which is no longer in office, and I've talked to our new congressman since then, too, that we've got definitely growing pains with, and ever since the law enforcement was built, Law Enforcement Center was built in 16 years ago, once we started doing the graded exercises with FEMA, and even when we get the state people in there, it's standing room only, and it's hard to work in that small environment over there. And then, as the county grows, as my office grows, last year, we looked at a grant, trying to put it together and then incorporate a number of other things in with doubling the size of the EOC and doubling the size of dispatch and adding some other offices. So this is a grant that came up. We found out that it has to go through, the state has to apply for it, and then we apply it to the state through the COG. And so I come before you today to ask that we be allowed to move forward with this. It's a 75-25 grant, so we will have to pay our share of 25% of the grant. But we have the property that we talked about last year over on the corner to put the building on, and so that part is worth something. So the actual amount that we would have to put in for, I'm not exactly sure what that property would appraise for, what the value of that is, but that would definitely be a part of it, so that would lessen that actual county burden of that 25%.
How much money are you asking for? What's the grant total?
The Baxter grant, that's what, 1 million.
1 million?
That'd be 250,000 on our part.
I just have some idea what the cost of the building was last year.
Last year, the building that we looked at doing, it was like $1.2 million, and we had a couple of. we had a couple of meetings with the Commissioners. I don't remember if we met with everybody, and TM with maintenance was involved in it because we were looking at it as serious as we could at that point and then hoping that we'd get the grant. So what I had applied for last year was $600,000 to justify that we could put in for the EOC part, and the EOC and the Emergency Operations Center and dispatch kind of go hand in hand, but they would not build the rest of the building as far as incorporating IT and other office space into that. So we would have to probably scale it down a little bit from what we had last year, and maybe in the future, we could add on to the building, but.
I'm going to verify that the land value could be an in-kind portion of the contribution. So we got a million, man. We got a million in Hackenton, that'd be a million, too, the land and the property.
I don't think it'll that high.
It's not that much, it's not that expensive piece of property. When will they award this grant?
Well, most of the grants that come out this time of the year, I would imagine is going to be in the fall, don't you think, Tom?
Let's try.
Let's try. Maybe they'd like to help us pay for 250,000.
Oh, she left.
I make a motion that we do this grant, seconded by Mr. Simpson, and to apply for this grant, Homeland Security Grant, to build a new EOC and dispatch center. Is any other discussion?
I just think that we obviously need to move forward knowing that it's a 75-25 grant. In your letter you sent out yesterday, money's not growing on trees, so if it happens, it'll have to, we'll have to find a quarter of a million dollars and.
Well, that's what I was trying to verify, maybe that quarter million can be the land back.
Part of it, quarter, Tom.
It's not worth that much.
Yes.
Well, the grant, yeah, the grant last year was $600,000 from the feds to come through the state, and 600,000 is what we would have had to spend based on last year's proposal. This year, if we put in for the million, and it's 250,000 is our share, the land is going to be worth something, but I don't know exactly what that land's going to be worth. So it'll be something a lot less than 250,000.
Maybe half of it.
Hopefully.
Maybe, maybe.
But by approving it, all we have to do, we'll have to deal with it in the fall when the grants are let out. That's what we've done on lots of things, so it's no big deal.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Consider and take appropriate action in reference to pouring concrete, replacing floors, historic courthouse, and it says Commissioner Precinct 1.
Judge, this is in reference to the ongoing discussion of pouring the concrete in the courthouse. The Historic Commission has delayed this activity so that they can, in their words, come up with a warmer, a warmer concrete, a warmer color concrete. At any rate, we're behind schedule, it's costing us money. The representative from the Historic Commission sent an email last Friday that she would not take this on any further. So with that, I would make a motion that we move on pour the concrete.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Hetherton, that we start pouring the concrete, so we will.
Is there anybody on the court that can explain to me, color of cement is warmer than another color?
August, in August, it's warmer.
They're not matching anything. It's all, you know, we're going, everything's going to be replaced, so it's just kind of, I, let's don't even go there, I just. So you have a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, and meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance.